Like to call the meeting in order, please. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pogecourt?
Here.
Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Before we start with Pastor Robert Brooks, I'd like to take this moment and we'll do a moment of silence for the Deputy Ryan Klinkenbruber. That was found dead, shot in his Mark Sheriff's Department patrol car approximately 5:00 PM in Omdele. He died as a result of his injuries. So if we can just do that for a moment. Everybody stand, please. Thank you, everybody. Like to invite Pastor Robert Brooks from the Tatchpee Nazarene Church to offer a invocation tonight.
Let's pray together. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come together, to fix our thoughts on something higher and greater than just business. We acknowledge you today, the Creator of all things, and we thank you for your grace and mercy that you bestow upon us and show us how to give that grace and mercy to others. Lord, we ask today that you would bless and guard and guide the lives of those who serve this community. Lord of all things, give wisdom and discernment as our leaders grapple with the challenges of leading this great city. Lord, protect their families, bless their families. Lord, we would ask that if any are dealing with personal difficulties or life challenges, that you would give each one the peace that only you can bring. If they have children, guard them, guide them into truth and bless and protect their lives. Lord, may the fruit of the labor of those who serve Tatchee this day bring blessings for the common good of all who call to Tatchee their home. And may the business of this meeting bring peace to our city. Now, Lord, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be pleasing in your sight for all who call you Lord, our right and our Redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Councilmember Smith, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to excuse our attorney. He's on his way, but he's stuck in traffic. So he's on his way. So we'll just keep going.
Those climbing lanes cannot be built.
There you go. All right, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion desired by anybody, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in listed sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action's taken. Does anybody from the audience want anything removed from the consent item? Council?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Audience oral written communications. Do we have any public comments from the public that are here? Do we have any emails or notices?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Finance director reports. That's number five is RSI participants. So I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI. Councilmember Pogecourt will take over the meeting.
Do we have any questions from the audience regarding RSI? I'm sorry. RSI, I'm thinking something else. Council?
No.
Okay, let's have a vote. Motion first, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogecourt?
Yes.
Four-zero vote with the recusal from Mayor Davies.
Communication engagement reports. Mr. Budge.
Mayor Davies, council. It's with great pleasure that I get to introduce a new staff member, a new member of my team, Maya Costa. Maya, go ahead and stand, please. Maya is now a community engagement specialist. She has been with us now this is starting her third week, and she has just hit the ground running. So it's just been fantastic with the content creation and things that we've been able to do. And one thing that I'll share with you as I've talked with Greg, with Councilmember Power, is that when we look at our social media, we see about a 70% female audience. And it's been male-driven in the conversation. So as I was hoping, when we got these very talented applicants, Maya stood out, and I was very happy to offer her this position following our 32 applicants for the job. So she brings that perspective and a youthful perspective. So we welcome that to how we communicate with our community. So and we stole her from Channel 23. So she brings that journalist background where she's worked at Channel 17 and 23 in the newsroom. So a very welcome addition to my team. So I just wanted to make this introduction because you'll see her with a camera running around.
All right. Congratulations. Public Works Director reports. Mr. Marsh, how are you this evening?
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Davies and council members. The item I have before you tonight is for downtown water tower painting project. It goes without saying that the downtown water tower is an icon in Tatchee, certainly a representation of the past, but also a living testament to the town's history and resilience. The water tower's been there for a long time. I actually did quite a bit of research on Google and I can't actually find exactly when it was installed, but it's been a long time, I can tell you that. And Mayor Smith, maybe you have a better...
I helped him, yeah. My dad worked for me, I had to put some of the bolts on there.
Drive any of the nails? No. It's obviously a big part of downtown and we want to keep it that way. So to preserve the integrity and ensure its longevity, we staff decided that it needed to be cleaned and painted, and it's getting to be a little bit bad shape. So in August of this year, staff solicited pricing to remove the two downtown Tatchee signs, get those refurbished, pressure wash the entire water tower, and then repaint it. For this project, we took a little bit of different approach for our contracting strategy. The city has been, for quite some time, a partner in a cooperative purchasing service called Sourcewell. And Sourcewell is a... It's just that it's a cooperative, or you might call it a joint power authority. It's association of agencies, of government agencies and cities and districts throughout the country. And its specific purpose is to speed up and improve and reduce costs for purchasing, purchasing of items as well as contract services. And what Sourcewell does is they go out and establish contracts with contractors or suppliers, and they go out to bid for those. So it's an open bidding process where there's a fixed RFP, and contractors and vendors will bid on the items in that RFP. In this case, for example, it's painting. So contractors, it was opened up to contractors within Southern California, and general contractors, painting contractors, were available to bid on that contract. Now, they're not bidding specifically on our work, but they're bidding on paint in general. So it might be the dollars per square foot for paint. You know, if it's elevated work, they bid for equipment to do that. So it's a generic bid for that type of work that you're interested in. And so the contractor will be awarded that contract. There's no work associated with the contract other than if somebody comes to Sourcewell and says, hey, I have a painting project. Well, this is the contractor who's won that work. So then, for the benefit to us, is that we eliminate all that RFP process, the advertising, the review of the bids. It's much faster for us and a lot less work for city staff to go out and get pricing for contract services or for even items to purchase, for example, tractors or piping or any of that kind of stuff. So it's kind of probably more information than you really wanted, but it is a little bit of a unique process for us. This is the first time we've done this for this type of work. The end result is that city staff has budgeted $45,000 in this year's budget for this work. That comes out of the general fund. And the bid price from Horizons Construction, who's the contractor in this case, was $42,727. So the recommendation from staff is that we award the downtown water tower painting project to Horizons Construction Company International, Inc., for the amount of $42,727.48. And authorize the city manager to approve any change orders up to 5% of the contract amount for $2,136.37. And I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions from the audience on this item? Council? Phil?
Go ahead.
Go for it.
Don, this includes everything? We aren't just paying Sourcewell that much money. They provide the work as well?
Yeah, so actually, we won't pay Sourcewell. We pay Horizons Construction.
Okay.
Our agreement is with Horizons Construction directly.
Okay.
And so they'll be doing the work and they'll be receiving payment. There is no payment to Sourcewell.
Okay.
It's no cost.
Oh, good. Okay.
But it is for labor and materials.
Right.
So they'll remove the historic downtown signs, take them to a shop, repaint them. In parallel, repainting the tower and then replace the historic downtown signs. But it's an all-in contract.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
So do you or staff get to see the bids?
There's no bids. There's one price. Again, we go to Sourcewell and we say, we have this project. This is the way it works. We have this painting project for our water tower. Sourcewell says, okay, for your area for painting work, this is the contractor who's been awarded the contract and who's been the low bidder for our contract for this type of work. And I met with them out on site. I showed them the work. They gave me a price, and that's the price.
You met with Sourcewell or you met with?
Actually, both. Sourcewell and the contractor came out together.
So the contractor, after he was awarded, they did a walkthrough with you, is that true?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's just because we don't get the city bids, how competitive it is.
That's right.
That's... Not sure about that yet, but we'll find out. Sourcewell is obviously nationwide, and so their references and their reputation is what we're using.
Yes. Again, our... I don't want to call it a contract necessarily, but we've hired Horizons Construction to do the work for it. Or we will. We'll be hiring Horizons Construction to do the work. So the agreement that we have is between Horizons and the city. It just so happens that the contract that they have in place is through Sourcewell, which we are a member of.
And Sourcewell should have had multiple bids.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
That's what I was getting at.
Yes, yes, they have multiple bids. I think there was 15 or 20 contractors that bid on it. You can see all this on their website, and you can see the bids.
All right.
And the RFP and all of that.
Yeah, that's what's going with this. It just seemed like we were eliminating a step that we don't want to eliminate.
I didn't mention it either, but this all meets the requirements from the state of California and the public contract code. And many cities do this. We obviously have not used this before, but a lot of cities do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Sourcewell checks their references and their pattern of being able to finish the job.
Perform.
Performance, reviews and that. And then transparency is sort of... Okay.
Yeah, it's very transparent. All the information is available on the website and you can see all that on the Sourcewell website as well as the contract that they have that we're working under and all that.
So you could go to the website and see all the bids?
Oh, yeah.
That's where I was getting with this, okay?
Yeah. And if I want to go see, you know, if I'm looking for a contractor to do storm drain cleaning, I can go on there and I can search for that. I can find a contractor that has a Sourcewell contract. And I don't call them directly. I go through Sourcewell.
Right.
And it's a very easy system for the city.
Okay, so basically, Sourcewell is doing the heavy lifting for the contract, the bidding process. So we do a somewhat... So Don made, I think, a key remark a moment ago, and that is, this meets the California State Public Bidding Process. Absolutely. So they have pre-negotiated rates, and they regularly send this out and renegotiate the rates again. In this case, we're just talking about painting. We use a company, I can't think of the name right now, but for our fleet. So there are sometimes, sometimes we'll buy locally for a certain reason, but there is a pre-negotiated rate for vehicles, police vehicles, public work vehicles. That way, they do all the bidding. There's a company called Wondery's that does that work. So basically, they're a company that just negotiates the rates and then renegotiates as necessary. And then cities and counties, government agencies can access that legally, and they're assured that they're getting the best rate you can get. So I feel very comfortable with this. And it came in under budget.
Do they charge a fee for their service then?
No.
Sourcewell?
No.
No?
No, it's a member agency. Again, it's a joint agency. It's like a joint powers agency. There's no cost.
We do the same thing with our health insurance. It's negotiated. We are a part of a JPA, many cities, and we negotiate that. There's power in numbers rather than individually.
And you also save money by not having staff go through all the bids.
Correct. Exactly. Yeah. It's a lot of work to put together and our request for proposal for this. I mean, it's probably 40 or 50 hours of staff time to put together an RP for a painting project like this. And then you've got to advertise, issue the RPs, review all the bids. It's a lot of work.
I did have a couple of quick questions. It's my understanding that the logo that is on the water tower that's coming down remains the same, that beautiful logo?
Yes. It's true.
Yeah, it's just getting a nice fresh paint, right?
No change.
How long will the scope of work take? And when would you anticipate it starting?
We're working through that right now with the contractor. They're kind of chomping at the bit. They're pretty much ready to go. So I would expect within the next three to four weeks they'll start. And I would expect it to take, you know, three or four weeks to do the work, something like that.
Thank you.
So the sign part of it, is it like a restoration? Sub-contract within the, not just painting?
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to take it to a shop and get it repainted.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually have all the specifications for colors and all that kind of stuff for it. So it should be identical to the original.
That was put up when Main Street was in the... I meant pink. I think the owners of the... Anyway, the people, it was done locally in house by the Reeds.
Mercury Graphics.
Pardon me?
Mercury Graphics.
Mercury Graphics, there we go. Okay, I'm satisfied. This is similar to the tech industry. The contractors probably subscribe to have their name in the system. They probably pay a fee.
Yeah, I believe they do, yes. That's where Sourcewell is.
Sort of like when people need computers fixed, this and that, or printers, whatever, they can... They have... You go to a service provider or technical provider, and it's separate from... And the end user, they just go to the company, and then they find providers that are signed up and do the work.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'm satisfied.
Susan?
This is like Angie's List for government. You've never seen advertisements for Angie's, which is now angies.com. But you call up and say, my ceiling just fell in. I'm a widow, I don't know what to do. And they say, for X amount of dollars, we'll send somebody out there to fix it. And the contractors all pay into that, so...
I've never used Angie's List.
Well, either are you. It's similar.
Except they have to actually be awarded a contract in order to be on the list of names.
No, you did mention, how long do you think it will take to do this job after they get...
I'm guessing three or four weeks.
And we're going to have equipment. So if the equipment moved in, we'll probably have to stay on site for the whole time.
Yeah.
So will be traffic problems?
We don't plan on doing any traffic control per se, but we will need to close off the sidewalk in that area.
Okay.
Are there any events scheduled in Railroad Park that month?
That's a good question. I don't believe there are any now, but I'll double-check that.
Nothing.
Is Red Apple Festival in October, it's usually?
But not in that park.
Not in the park.
Okay. And they better get started before the weather changes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're in the same situation as the road out there on 202.
All right. Any more questions from council? Do we have any comments from the... From the audience? If not, I'll...
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Development Service Director reports. Jake?
Evening, mayor and councilmembers. Just one item for you tonight, pretty quick. It is a certificate of acceptance for an irrevocable offer of dedication for ingress, egress, and road purposes on both Tatchee Boulevard and Valley Boulevard. So on page 64, Tori, there's a quick sketch. And I did real fancy with a marker. Didn't use crayon. Anyway, this is a parcel of land that was approved for a RV resort and mini-storage back in March of 2022. And one of the conditions of the development of that 30-acre parcel, which is to be developed in stages, not all at one time, but is the dedication of the road rights of way for Tatchee Boulevard and Valley Boulevard for the long-term growth of both of those roads to their ultimate design width. And so the developer's busy checking off all their conditions of approval, one of which is this item. And so tonight, asking the council to approve and accept the dedicated right of way. So the dedication's already been done and signed. And so for you all, it is to accept that right of way, meaning we will take on that road or those roads. And so procedurally, I'm going to ask you to approve it. And then what staff will do is open escrow with a local escrow agency to control the transaction and to issue title insurance, which is what myself and the city attorney have worked out for this process in the past. So I recommend that you accept the irrevocable offer of dedication as proposed and authorize the mayor to sign a certificate of acceptance and direct staff to record. Same. Have it answer questions.
Do we have any questions from the audience? See you then. Council? Phil?
So are they going to do any half-road improvements at the moment or at some other time?
Yeah, good question. So Tatchee Boulevard is already in that location at its appropriate width. There are some public improvements still needed. Sidewalk, streetlights are still missing from that area. That's a component of the project of the developer's plan. Valley, at this time, we have... We did not condition that project to develop Valley Boulevard because their, it's a long story, but their project doesn't... This, what they have proposed and have approved doesn't extend to Valley. The back 10 acres will remain vacant even if they completely construct what they have approved from the planning commission. And so it's not our habit or policy to require roadway construction when it's still associated with vacant land immediately adjacent to it. So instead, though, we do want to take the opportunity as soon as possible with the developer to grab the land that we need should the city be able to be in a position to construct a road before that land goes from vacant to developed. So that's our motivation. And I will say that, you know, as your city engineer, I've spent, I have my eye on the extension of Valley Boulevard over to Stuber. Trying to piece the pieces together. And so this is an opportunity for us to grab one of the pieces of right of way that might eventually position us to construct that roadway. So that's the thought process.
Similar to what we've done between Curry and...
Yes, and Denison. Yes, sir. Okay. That's exactly right.
All right. Typically, if it's developed, though, they construct the half-road improvements.
That's right.
For gutter and pavement.
That's right. And so conversely, on Tatchee Boulevard, they are required. Most of the road is there on Tatchee Boulevard, but some pieces are missing. Like I said, sidewalk and streetlights are the notable missing items. They are required at their expense to make those improvements for access to their property and for the use of the public. Okay. So if, on the other hand, if we don't extend Valley and he goes and comes back to us and say, well, my first project was successful. I now want to develop the last 10 acres, we would say to him, that's great. You're going to need to construct a roadway. Right. But whether we have the right of way or don't have the right of way is not... It does affect that decision. So we want the right of way in case we are in a position to extend the road.
So Tatchee Boulevard is going to be full width at some point? Like we're... Railroad is a real...
Is what it is. It's not going anywhere, unless I'm mistaken.
On the south side. On the south side, we've got...
The south side is pretty much where it's supposed to be. So my long term thought for you is that it is at full width all the way to Bailey.
Right.
And then if you all recall, as you drive out to Pilot, it necks down for a couple of lots between like Selecta Switch and Pilot. So we're going to try to get our hands on those two pieces. And then my thought is what you see in front of Pilot is really the long term future or some version of that, where there's a median in the roadway to control cross traffic access. But don't need that now, but as that land out there develops, it'll get busier and we'll need that kind of control and access control. So that's the vision. And I'm kind of, that's just me kind of speaking off the cuff. We haven't studied that.
That's all the questions I have.
Mayor Pogie?
Nope. Thanks.
Mine, being an RVer myself, you know, I always thought we need something in this town to attract and.
Sure.
You know, that kind of gets it out of town a little bit, but you know, I think it'd be a good thing.
Yeah. We feel like the planning decision made, commission made a good decision on that one. That was a tricky part. We massaged it to deal with the adjacent mobile home park and the adjacent businesses and shifted some of the pieces around. And the developer was really quite willing to work with us on the layout. So we'll see if we can get there. It's kind of, he's got to supply all the money, so it's.
Well, right across the street, you've got a wonderful walking path and bicycle path. So they just walk across the street and walk right downtown and ride their bikes downtown. It brings more business.
Absolutely.
Or their scooters.
Just to be clear, that's not part of tonight's. Absolutely.
Right. There's a slight nexus, so we.
Yeah. Even if you didn't like what it was, it's still, I'd still be making the same recommendations. But yeah, I think it's a good project.
All right, thank you, Jake. Need a motion, please? Somebody would like to.
I summon.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bogomkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Assistant manager reports, please. Tori?
Good evening, Mayor Davies and councilmembers. I have a couple things here for you. I think I was going to sort of touch, I'm going to be touching on here tonight, so different areas. First one is for kind of emergency management and our cost recovery. So as everybody's aware, we had the tropical storm Hillary, which we thought we were going to do with tropical storm in Tatchby. Wasn't a high on my list, but obviously on Mount Festival weekend. And as part of that, there was a local emergency declared by the Kern County Board of Supervisors. They ratified that back on August 29th. And so therefore made us eligible through the California Office of Emergency Services to recoup some of our costs. I know the county is still working with FEMA to potentially extend that to the federal level. If that does happen, there could be some more cost recovery available. But what we were able to do with the emergency declaration was to calculate the, sort of some costs of our storm response, whether that was staff, regular time, overtime, and then some of our damages, we fared pretty well in most areas. And so there were a few significant damage spots near the wastewater treatment plant that were allowed to not necessarily fix so it never happens again. That's a different project down the road, but to get it back to its pre-storm condition. So we factored that into this as well. So we worked with county OES, Cal OES, and then also FEMA inspectors came out to take a look at a few things as well a few weeks ago. We also spent several weeks calculating our costs. So we're talking public works, and they were responding, including storm drains as the rain, you know, five plus inches in 12 hours, as they were cleaning storm drains and police officers responding. Staff was in here meeting, trying to figure out, you know, how to get people out of town from Mount Festival safely while the storm was coming in, driving around on the days, taking a look at things. So we were able to kind of calculate the rev estimate and submit that to Kern OES at $86,100. That does include some of the repairs to Enterprise Way and the drainage stop at 58. The wastewater treatment plant fence took a pretty good hit from all that water coming through the Mill Street under crossing and did some damage there. So we're looking to potentially in the future, maybe get additional funding if this does go to the federal level. We also have just free information during the storm. Obviously, there were areas that were kind of inundated and we have what we call the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that we update every couple of years with Kern OES and FEMA. What we do is we put a bunch of projects on the list that we realize are drought issues. We're trying to basically mitigate disaster impacts. And so this storm gave us a good idea of some of the areas that in the future, we're going to put on that list. And then FEMA has grants that are available, but you have to have that project on the list for the feds to say, you can have this money to fix this drainage. So this storm did give us a good idea of some additional areas to put on that list. So that'll be a project for later. But tonight, no action, just wanted to let the council know we're looking to recoup this $86,000 in storm response time from the tropical storm. Any questions?
Do we have any comments from the audience? Council? Thank you. All right, so different information only. Thank you.
All right. So our next item is creation of the Economic Development Support Fund and the Sign Grant Program. So obviously, the city of Tatchby has a very distinct sign code. You know, it's accomplished a lot of quality of life goals from when it was established a few decades ago. We stand out among our neighboring communities, whether in the Tatchby area or surrounding cities. A lot of that success came from the downtown sign grant program, which was established in early 2000s by the Tatchby Redevelopment Agency. It was very successful, really helping downtown give you a unique uniform look with commercial businesses. So we were thinking, as the funding for that expired many years ago, want to find ways to explore and assist small businesses, especially with the cost of startup promotion and keep their investments safe and profitable. So with the passage of Measure S, our one set in sales tax last November, voter outreach identified protecting local businesses and jobs as one of the funding priorities. And so we continue to find ways to do that with assisting, while assisting our, with quality signage is one of those avenues. So we're wanting to establish this first, the Economic Development Support Fund and Sign Grant Program. So our look is to basically find ways to help small businesses with the, either the purchase of a new sign or replacement of their commercial signs. We do expand, unlike the previous program that was just downtown, we've expanded this to all commercial areas in the city of Tatchby, so it's good across the board. We are looking to fund this through the creation of the sign grant, or the Economic Development Support Fund. That's something annually we'll reassess and we'll bring to council for budget approval. Maybe there'll be, you know, maybe we won't get many takers this year around, it'll be plenty of money in the fund for next budget cycle, we won't be making any adjustments. Or maybe, you know, it's wildly popular and we'll budget for more in the years to come. So some of the major provisions, and we sort of took these from, you know, why reinvent the wheel when other cities have done something similar? And so we sort of took some highlights from some other programs. One of the ones, this is a reimbursement. So it's a reimbursement by the city of a value of the 50% of eligible sign cost, up to a maximum of $3,000 and a minimum of 500. That's our share. So let's say the sign was 6,000, you know, we would pay back 3,000 on the maximum end. There's also sort of a conditions of maintenance for a three year period, so the sign has to stay in good shape. We'll also have it on a sort of first come, first served basis. So if we have too many applicants, we're going to kind of prioritize, you know, what's the economic benefit, what's the financial participation of the property owner, and what's the benefit of the sign on the city? We'll also, as I said, before it's going to be reimbursement, so once everything is paid to the contractor that does the work for the applicant, we will then reimburse. We've got some definitions for small businesses, but we're looking at folks and employee fewer than 20 employees. Can't have any active code enforcement violations. Now, if the sign is part of that, we see we may be able to help remedy the situation. Not looking to use grants for maintenance, but more for new exterior signs. Now, there's something might came up where maybe there's historic sign that needs some help and we have some discretion by the city manager, maybe help out there for some maintenance issues on maybe historic sign that can't necessarily be replaced. But we've also, all the terms and conditions are in the staff report. So our goal is to sort of reinvent a little bit of the sign program we had in the past, but expand it and make it a little more, just more of reimbursement. We're not going to pay the entire sign, and in the past, that's how it worked, and we're just looking to reimburse some costs. So we know when a small business starts, some of their getting that right sign out, you know, especially if you're in the downtown area where the codes are a little different, we want to make sure we help them as much as we can. So that's the goal of this program. And so we're looking to allocate $30,000 from the general fund this first time around, and all to be used as part of the sign grant program to say act of mental funds are exhausted. Should additional fund be needed, it'll go in future bunch of allocations or roll in the future fiscal years. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of the funding of the Economic Development Support Fund and the terms and conditions of the sign grant program, and also repealing the prior ordinances that terminated all previous sign grants. So those are resolution number 0203 and resolution number 0205 that terminate all previous sign grant programs in the city of Tatchby. So with that, we happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the public, from the audience? Yes, could you come up to the, could you announce your name and area of residence, please?
I'm Claire Scotty. I live in Bear Valley, but I'm the executive director of the Greater Tatchby Chamber of Commerce. I had a question to see how the Chamber of Commerce could work with our local businesses to help them learn about this program, and ask us to work with you guys on it.
Okay. For sure, the, once we get the application, I think the forms and everything hammered down, I think we have to share all that information with the chamber that we even point people our direction, because there could be a bit of a process for people coming in. We want to make sure that their design meets the sign codes. You know, it's not a flashing, you know, sign that doesn't necessarily jive downtown or something. So we do have some acceptance on that level, but absolutely, once we get all the application stuff all squared away, then we'll be happy to share that with the chamber and just point people our direction. So it'll be great, especially on the startup package, so people know when they start, there's potential funding there.
Okay, great. Do we have any other questions from the audience? Council?
I have a series of questions. Only because I'm really excited about this.
Okay.
So the first question is actually along with Claire, is, you know, when you're a business owner, you're the CEO, the president, the inventory specialist, the accountant, the janitor, you know, you get your head down and your shoulder into the grinding stone. You work and you don't always put your head up to research these opportunities. So one was how we're going to market to make sure people are aware of it. And I understand they have 60 days to complete this sign once it's been approved?
That's kind of what we're looking for in terms of timeline. I know if somebody says, hey, my contractor's backed up, you know, I need extra time. Yeah, that's, again, we're not putting any money out until they pay in full anyway.
Right.
Now, if it's somewhere it looks like they're sort of dragging their feet and there might be funding better spent elsewhere, that's where the 60 day might get triggered. But I think most people are going to be working within that window, or contractors are going to be dealing, you know, ordering parts or whatever it might be. So in the marketing side, obviously, not only do we have a, you know, phenomenal communication staff that's going to help with that, but a lot of it too is just going to be me visiting and knocking on doors, because when someone usually opens a business anyway, we come in and say hi. And it kind of, this idea sort of spurned from a visit to a new business where they said, yeah, we're getting things, and once we get going, we want to put a sign out front that matches our neighbor's sign. And so we thought, okay, well, what a great way to start this program again. So that's going to be, a lot of us is going to be word of mouth, face to face, letting people know, hey, there's an opportunity here. So a lot of that will be personal on the visits of the new businesses and even folks that maybe have been in business a while that don't have a sign, that are just have a window sign up or something, and the cost has been the reason why they haven't put a sign up, so.
And these are for physical signs, not for vinyl or window displays? This is for an actual physical.
Yes, yeah, exactly, yeah. And exterior signs, not interior signs, just to decorate the place.
And then I know, I worked with Jen when a small business was opening up here in the city, and I believe you guys had a list of sign makers that they've used in the past or recommend that they've done really good jobs. Are you, are still going to provide a list of?
Yeah, we have people that we work with. I mean, we say we don't recommend anybody, but we obviously have people that.
These are people who've done signs.
Yes, they understand our sign codes as well in certain areas, because it's different downtown than it is maybe in the Tucker corridor. And there's, there's still some small businesses in the Tucker corridor, they're not all, you know, big chains, there are some small folks in there too. So yeah, it'll be, we'll be able to work with those folks and give them a list of some folks that know, you know, what we're looking for in Tatchby.
I think it's an excellent opportunity for small businesses, for sure.
Yeah, it'll be a good starting point. We'll see where it goes, so.
That was it, there was actually nothing.
Is it?
No.
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. Claudia Elliott. I just have a question. Will these signs have to go through planning commission for approval? And will the cost of the sign, are you going to allow, I've seen permit fees over $400 to get a sign approved? So I'm wondering if you're considering that cost in this project? Thank you.
Yeah, so in the terms and conditions of the agenda packet, this is all included. So all the planning commission approvals are still required and all the regular fees are still required as well. So there'll be no, because that, those fees are going to cover administrative time. So we want to be able to put this money towards the physical creation and installation of the sign. So yes, that's kind of one of the, one of the parts of the business owner is still paying the sign, but a $400 investment by the business owner turns into a $6,000 sign for 3400, it's a pretty good return on their investment for, you know, having the permit fees. So yeah, those will still be covered by the applicant.
Great. Thank you. Phil?
Just, that's kind of where I was going to go as well. We have to approve the sign.
Yeah.
Everything before they.
Yeah, the process remains the same. We're just saying, hey, let's help you with the cost of the creation and installation. You know, when it's all said and done, we'll reimburse you up to this certain amount that, you know, once everything's approved. And even, we want to be with folks on the front end, so they're not going to give you something, assuming we're going to give them approval. You know, when they come with their first rendering and it's not going to even pass the planning commission, obviously, we won't even go down that route. Right. Yeah.
It's a good program. We have a good sign ordinance that went through a lot of work to get to the end product. But it shows in our community, when you drive through and the signs are consistent and well done. Won't name communities around the county, but there are some that are just stick a sign out of piece of plywood on the approach to town, and that's what you get.
And technology's changed quite a bit too. The materials now, I know initially the first sign program, everything was carved wood and that's, and they cost what they cost. Now composite materials have made these, you can make them look just like that for, you know, half to a third of the cost in some cases.
Running and everything.
Yeah, exactly. So technology's changed to be able to get that look to meet our sign code, but not necessarily at that same price point.
We used to pay for the whole sign, wasn't it about 5,000 was the first? I think up to five? Yeah. It was up to five, still 3,000. If you can, it still gives a, it's not a giveaway to the homeowner, but it's a partnership saying, we're with you, you don't have to go along. They have to, gives them a little buy-in too, not just getting a free sign.
Yeah, and not even everybody's going to have a giant sign. Maybe it's just a thousand dollar sign that they're putting out, which is sufficient for their business, and they get 500 dollars that back. So that's, that's not necessary. Hopefully, we can get some of those as well. Not everybody's seeking the top dollar.
Right. It's not just a giveaway.
Right.
I think it's really good.
Yeah. The health of the maintenance part too, because there's some skin in the game too, right? They pay money out of their own pocket, not just, not just pay for by the city. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Susan? No, I think it's great. You know, we can help small businesses, you know, when they're getting, like you said, when they just startup cost. That's just, a lot of people don't look at when they're looking at startup, you know, business, the little things that we, you know, you have to do to promote your business. So I think it's a great opportunity. Can I get somebody to entertain a motion, please? On item 13.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bogomkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Great. Item 14.
All right.
Tori?
Last one here tonight is in agreement with, a couple agreements actually, with Minerva Solid Waste Recycling Compliance and MSW Consultants for Waste Recycling Rate Study. So as council is aware, we keep working through state mandated regulations surrounding SB 1383. This is mandatory organics recycling programs and a few other state laws surrounding that for commercial businesses. We've already passed the ordinances, established the services, but we've been working through the regulatory and compliance issues with Cal Recycle, navigating kind of a commercial, a complex commercial implementation, food rescue waivers programs with our hauler WM. So as it relates to curbside recycling for residential customers, we are in a corrective action plan right now issued by Cal Recycle. Our goal is to add the third service by the summer of 2024. Current efforts are underway in the county, current unincorporated areas do the same. So part of this, many regulations around 1383 along with other bills such as AB 1826 and SB 341, they're centered around record keeping and compliance.
and SB 341, they're centered around record keeping and compliance. And more and more, the state is saying, city staff, you have to do it, I can't let my friends at WM do the work for me, like the city jurisdiction has to do this. And so there's a lot of different things with, on the commercial side specifically, are they generating X amount of garbage in order to require this recycling or require organics? Are they generating food? How much food do they generate? How large is their restaurant? All of these things are in the codes for SB 1383 and AB 1826. So, it's a lot to keep track of with this. So we've identified a potential partner to assist us, Minerva, they're a solid waste and recycling company, and they build and provide access tracking and compliance software. You can see in the attached scope of work, they're gonna maintain, working with WM, all our commercial service data, creating specific data schemes consistent to the city and WM, they've got implementation records, reports, tracking status of individual generators across the three laws that I mentioned, along with the organics and food rescue requirements. The software also has education and outreach materials, along with customized mobile assets for site visits and inspections. We're supposed to go out and inspect, that's part of what we also need to do, and so this software allows me to go out with an iPad, do an inspection, take a picture, whatever, upload it directly to Minerva, so then when Cow Recycle says, hey, we need these records from your inspections, I can simply generate the report, send it off to Cow Recycle. So we're receiving a small city discount for this, we requested a three-year contract for 17,000 per year, so 51,000 total. There is a new grant that we are going to be receiving, payable from the refuse and recycling fund via this grant from Cow Recycle for the SB 1383 local assistance implementation program. The application is open, we'll probably have a, council will have to do a grant resolution probably next meeting, or intend to apply for this. We, our funding will be 75,000 when it's awarded later this year or early next spring, and so that is going to fold in for the Minerva side as part of our implementation and inspection program that Minerva will cover, be covered by that grant. Additionally, with the additional state mandated organic service, we now have new costs to the contract hauler, the new rate for the additional services to our customers. We started the rate conversations and calculations with WM, and continue to work towards a rate that's reasonable for the additional service provided. Remember, organics, that's what we covered weekly, along with trash, so the new schedule will look like trash, organics, and then, you know, trash, organics, and recycling, you're blue, basically, so one week will be black and blue, one week will be black, blue, green, of all three out of the curtain. And so that's the, that's the kind of, which means more service and more trucks, more passing by your home. So we have to, again, more staff time is required for SB 1383 and AB 1826, and so that staff time comes from the city's refuse and recycling fund, some of the money we get back from our contracts or our franchise agreement with WM. So MSW can provide a rate study that's consistent with the service estimates provided by WM analysts, along with conditions of the franchise agreement, including this consumer price index and the cost of living adjustments for staff allocated to the refuse and recycling funds. I attach the terms of the agreement with MSW, and for the services, the rate study not to exceed 40,000, this will be reimbursed from the refuse recycling fund, factor into the rate study for cost recovery. So we've got a couple different things here, centered around some very complex and confusing laws, we're trying to make them a little less confusing as we start rollout of this new program. So the recommendation tonight, a couple of them, is to approve the agreement with Minerva Software for Solid Waste Recycling Compliance, and to approve an agreement with MSW Consultants for Waste and Recycling Rate Study, along with approval by the city attorney and authorized the mayor's assignment. I'm sure you got questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Okay, one question I have, can we vote on this together, or do we have to have two separate?
Do them separate?
Together.
Together, okay, great. Do we have any comments from the council, Phil? Susan? No, I'm sorry. Ogie? Susan?
Yeah, I was gonna ask him, this is just city, it does not include, uh-
Yeah, this is just city, everything we're doing from the tracking to the rates. I know the county has concurrently been doing their sort of rates for unincorporated areas, which are gonna actually significantly higher than what we're looking at right now, just because of the, you know, what we already have in place, so, yeah, there's gonna be some, some rate changes across the board.
Susan?
I just wanna make sure I understand a couple of things. One, MSW Consultants and Minerva have a long experience working with this, so this is not like having to learn the process, they're, they already are very familiar with it.
Yeah, the beautiful part about Minerva, they actually already deal with WM and a lot of other jurisdictions, so when I said, oh, our franchise haulers, WM, and so, no problem, you can get, we know how their system works and our system, so they can get the data import easier, so we can start tracking these accounts.
And they're gonna make sure that we're in compliance, because it's my understanding that if you're not compliant, it is a huge fine daily.
It's, yeah, to not do the service, 10,000 a day, if you just said, we're not doing anything, and then the corrective act, yeah, it's, it's gonna get ugly, they just keep the money, they just keep some of your tax money, that's how they find you, they're gonna give it back. So, yeah, that's, Minerva's, they've got a lot of experience in this, and again, it's one of those things where a state mandate has created a opportunity, business opportunity for somebody to come in and realize that a lot of small jurisdictions like us have one person, I mean, looking at the entire, you know, waste and refuse department right here, and so there's only one person doing it, and so it's easier to, sometimes to get some assistance technology-wise to track this stuff, so.
Well, from, when we first brought this to the council last year, I was totally against it, still totally against it, I think it looks so stupid to drive down these streets and see all these trash cans out on the street. My dad lives in Garden Grove-
There's a lot down there too.
Yeah, he's got three cans, and it's, it looks, it looks crazy, you know? People don't have room in their driveways or in their backyard to put all the trash cans, and so I know I voted against it, and I know I was counseled and looked at, I know this is a state mandate, and I don't want to see us get fined, but I just think, you know, I can see doing it for restaurants, but I do not generate enough organic waste at my home to have a third can. That's me personally, my family, so, you know, I just don't see it being enough, and then to have that stinky trash can, you know, it's gonna be once a week, but you know, if I look down, there's only this much in it, and I'm not gonna take it out, I'm gonna leave it there another week, and then it's gonna be a hot, a hot summer, and it's gonna be nasty.
It's one of the one-size-fits-all approaches by the state, if it's supposed to work in a big city, it's supposed to work attached to you, right? That's kind of their mentality. There's a lot of jurisdictions with the same exact complaints in the states as well. Here's what you're supposed to do, so, you know, we're just, you know, just trying to make chicken salad and chicken you-know-what at this point, so.
Thank you, Corey, for all your work on this, and I know, but it's a lot of work, a lot of work in everything, so, like to, we need to, we can vote on both at the same time, if I can have a motion, please?
So we-
You're gonna have the same vote on each one?
Oh, you have to vote on two?
Well, if there's anyone that's gonna vote no on each one, I'm gonna take them separately.
Okay, no, okay.
Well, I'm against the third can, just for what he said, because I have one bag of trash a week, you know, and I need three cans.
Let's, let's take it to-
We're not, we're not voting to-
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we're not voting on-
No, we're not voting on the end.
We're not hiring professional consultants to help the city DHP do the best job we can to be as efficient as we can with the state mandated, unfunded mandate that we have to push out.
Two days of violations is more than what you're asking for, correct?
Yeah, all right, so-
So basically, I just roll out my cans so that I don't get it.
And I'll be, I dislike the R.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, motion?
I'm able.
Okay.
Nice second.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
5-0 vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. Police chief reports. Chief Stanbridge.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. What I'm up here tonight is to talk about having the attached BPD purchase body worn cameras. The attached BPD does not currently deploy body worn cameras to our officers in the field, and we're one of maybe two agencies in Kern County and probably in the Central Valley that doesn't wear body worn cameras at this point, and I feel it is positive benefit as we look forward to the well-being and safety of both our officers and our public to purchase the body worn cameras. Some of the benefits of body worn cameras are transparency and accountability, increased stability in how we conduct ourselves with our public, quicker resolution to issues by being able to look back at body worn camera if necessary to resolve conflicts, corroborating evidence in cases, criminal cases going to the DA's office, and training opportunities, especially as we have newer officers and we're able to identify training issues and things like that. So one of the, the company that we selected is Axon Enterprises, and they would fall under our sole source ability because of the fact that we currently deploy Axon tasers in the field, all of our personnel are trained on Axon tasers, we currently have an Axon taser instructor in-house, so what we are doing is just purchasing body worn camera to go with said tasers and be able to record everything that we do. So part of this contract, what that does is it purchases 21 body worn cameras, which will cover me and all of the staff, tasers, training, and it will cover all of the software, hardware, installation, and training, and this is gonna be a five-year contract. So currently, one of the big issues we run into is when we send evidence to the DA's office, because we're still using an outdated and a little more archaic system, we have to physically go on, pull all, all videos down, and we have to upload them to a thumb drive or to a CD and ship them to the DA's office. When we have body worn camera, it will allow us, because they are connected to Axon as well, it will allow us to place it in a secure link and send it right to the district attorney who is actively, who is asking for that specific evidence, and then they can download it into a secure link, they're able to share it with court, defense counsel, whoever they need to share it with, whereas it is now, we have to make additional CDs and thumb drives and things like that for them to disperse, so there's gonna be some cost savings on the backend, I can't tell you exactly how much, because it'll be over years' time, but nonetheless, staff time will be more than well worth what we're trying to do here. So the current contract, year one would be 29,202, and then council will see that it jumps up significantly over years two through five. Part of that reason was, we only budgeted in, the police budget this year, 30,000 in order to get this project up and running, and so we had to get them to drop this substantially the first year, which increased the other years over the course of the contract. So what I'm asking for tonight, and I'm sure there will be follow-up questions either from council or from the public, which is fine, I'm asking that staff pass the ability for the police chief and police department to purchase Axon body worn cameras and to allow the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Are there any questions?
Yeah, do we have any comments or questions from the public? No? Council? Phil?
I think it's good for your department, it's good for the city, it's good for everyone involved, for the officers.
In this day and age, I don't think you can be without them, to be honest with you.
I agree.
It's a tough position that you guys are always in.
We can't, recently we've taken some complaints that, and they're real minor, that I could have, if we'd had body worn camera, I could have pulled them up, looked at it, and doubled them immediately. Instead, now I'm having to assign a supervisor to in turn look into this, and it's just, I mean, the amount of staff time that gets wasted by just not having them is, is inordinate if you go over years' time.
It's very important, I think, now.
Councilmember Power?
I did, actually, I think having the, the data automatically uploaded also is, you know, keeps the integrity of the information-
Correct.
And so that's, that's helps with liability, and I think it's a great after-action report for new, you know, rookies, I had the opportunity of meeting three recently-
Oh, you did?
And they can look what experienced officers handled the situation, stood it theoretically, dealing with it, they can see how it was handled, and he said, she said, arguments all day long, we've all seen police cam videos, like, I cannot believe that person just did that, you know, you, it's untenable, so, yeah, I think it's a very good investment, it's really minimum cost.
Yeah, it, it works fantastic, they come in, just see how they work, they wear them, so when they get out on a call for service, right before they get out, they'll tap it, and it goes back, I can set it for 30 seconds to a minute, usually you want to set it about 30 seconds, so it'll, it'll record 30 seconds back. They tap it, they get out of car, they go contact an individual, or when they get dispatched to a call for service and they're in their car, they tap it as they're en route, and so that way the camera's ready to go by the time they get there. I mean, the Axon program is fantastic, it allows us to go back and view things, it allows us to go back and redact if we need to give information out for public records requests or whatever the case may be to, to a certain party, it just, it's so user-friendly, it's, it's gonna save our records staff a ton of time as well.
Susan?
We can't afford to not do this, we have to do this.
So, my, not, not my concern is, my question is for you, if they draw their weapon or they draw their taser, that automatically comes on, or do you have to manually turn it on?
Well, we have that ability, that part of the program I purchased in this package, so we'll see how it works.
Okay.
There's been some pros and cons, and you and I can talk about that later, it's mostly because there's been some issues where people have turned it on and activated by accident, and it'll turn on every camera within a certain radius, so there's some parameters we have to put on it.
Okay.
Because you don't want one of your officers changing in a locker room or in the restroom, and it accidentally turns on his or her camera.
Okay.
So there's some parameters that you have to use, and, and so I'll work through the Axon folks as they come and do all of our training inside.
Fantastic. Do we have any comments on, from the public on this? Okay. Nothing, Lieutenant, Lieutenant, a motion, please?
I'm so moved.
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
5-0 vote, motion carried.
Thank you, council. Thank you.
City manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor Davies, I have to thank the city council for their support tonight, we've had several very, very important items that have been taken care of on behalf of the citizens, so thank you very much. Just a couple of calendar reminders, tomorrow, Chief Stanbridge will be the chief, the keynote speaker for the Chamber of Commerce lunch, that has been moved from the Big Papa's Restaurant to Kelsey's Downtown, and that's at noon. If anybody, I know we have tickets for you, but if anybody in the audience is looking, I know Claire has them on Eventbrite, I'm not sure if that's closed yet, but-
Yeah, if you guys wanna go, just let me know, I'll be meeting.
Okay. And the second thing is, pickleball with the police, second time around, the first time out of the gate was a huge success because of Chief Key, Tyler, and many others, it was a huge success, we're gonna try it again, so that's, that is Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the parking lot just right out here, so come and join us, come and play, come and watch, come and support our police department and the youth of, of this community. Third thing is, coffee with the mayor on Thursday at the Commons Cafe there on Mill Street, formerly known as the Coffee Mill, that starts at 7:30 AM in the morning, 7:30 to 9:00, and I'm told that Granite Construction is mobilizing here soon to start our second, actually third paving job, and we, we completed Pinion earlier this year, and Valley Boulevard, of course, is fabulous, and now we're going to be repaving E F and Poly, and then using some grindings across, across the tracks and things like that, so it's gonna be starting in the next couple of weeks, and of course, key our communications department along their mind, informing the public of those potential detour disclosures, different things, but that's coming up soon, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, councilmember reports? Councilmember Smith, anything?
No, at the last current call meeting, maybe Jake could have, there was in circulation some final signatures for the truck climbing lane, one of the reports, do you have any update from your committee on that?
No, I don't think we have an update.
Okay. It was supposedly gonna be, go into the next level of-
It was supposed to go to the CTC in October.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you and I and Greg are planning to attend that in person.
Just in person, that's right.
Keeping a very strong focus.
Okay. Ogie?
Just heads up, there's a lot of painting of curbs, you know, no parking areas, and then temporary parking, and I know that the crossing guards at Tompkins were almost in tears in delight that that got done, and I saw the young man out there painting another curb today, and I was surprised at his demeanor, and so it's kind of cute. So anyway, we're tickled that that's all being done, it looks very nice.
Could I add on to that?
Sure.
They're doing a good job, they're taking, they're not just slopping it on, they're doing a very nice job.
There is one guy, Don, could you give me his name?
Danny. Yeah, I know, it's one guy, that's, I saw him today, it was cute, almost stopped.
He's a college student, he's-
Yeah?
Tyler Hamlin.
Oh, wow.
He's the son of one of our planning commissioners, and nevertheless, he's, he's part-time college student, and he is meticulously, and efficiently painting curbs, fire hikers all across the city, we have more than 700 fire hikers, so he works two days a week, and he does a spectacular job. It's all about the details.
Yeah.
Our street sweeper is broken, by the way, you may have noticed.
Whoa.
I know. So, Don has a good plan, and we're putting that together, but it's in the shop, it'll be different, I'm not sure, but falls in the air, so we'll make sure-
Please, please. Councilmember Powers?
Um, last week, we had the opportunity to sell, Susan and I, to go to Woods Pavilion and give them a certificate on behalf of the city, they celebrated their 40th anniversary, and it's great to see a small family business like that do so well for so long, they're, it's a quiet but strong contributor to the community, and Maya, I had the opportunity to see you talk at Tehachapi, you did great, and I can't wait to see what else you're gonna do, it was really, really well done.
Councilmember Susan?
Two things, if, I grew up in Mahogany, and if you told me 25 years ago that Tehachapi would be a destination wine place, I would have laughed you out of my town, probably.
Exactly.
And if you had told me all these other things that were going to happen, I, I just never would have believed them, and now here we are. And I think that, because we don't have a ton of information about the water tower, I think that we should maybe work with, with Charles White or Del Troy?
Del Troy, probably.
And, because I'm sure they have information, I know it had to have been probably put up in the 1870s something when the railroad came through, but-
It's actually the third tower, I believe, so we do have some information.
Now, see, you ruined it all.
Yeah, when he said that, I'm like, we actually have some information, but it's, it's maybe-
Well, it might be, this might be fun one way, if you take a picture of it to put all that in.
Yeah, but it took a while, I think, real quick.
Didn't it fall down and flood the town in the earthquake?
Well, flooded the area.
Well.
Yeah.
Not that much water.
Yeah, maybe the whole town, it definitely, but, yeah, we do have some information, but you know, it would be nice to have, I don't think there's a plaque over there, is there, you know, it would be nice to have, I don't think there's a plaque over there, is there, Don, about the history of the water tower?
I don't believe so.
If we work with the heritage, they can maybe kind of rededicate it once it's painted, a nice little historic plaque or something, talking about history, yeah, it'd be nice. We just spent our 45, we went from 42 something to 45.
And there it is.
I just have on my report, this last weekend, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints had a emergency preparedness, and we had two officers from our attached BPD give a presentation on safety, what happens if we have a major earthquake or a major emergency up here, and what a great job they did, chief, I just wanna let you know, both the officers did a great job, Timery Torres was the director of this program, and we had people from all over the town, people from other churches there, for emergency preparedness, and we had signs on the street, we had signs, it was a great opportunity, and it looks like we might do it again, something every year, every two years, but, that was a great thing that Timery did, and I just, all I did was just make contact, so, but thanks to our attached BPD, and we had, we had CERT there, we had CERT to rescue there, we had, we had a lot of other organizations, thank you, Mr. Budge, for also your help in getting everybody